Five forty-six, I will call this listening session of the Bloomington City Council to order. Thank you for everyone for being here tonight and thanks for your patience waiting for us. We will start us off, Mr. Jankel. And why don't we have you, if, just identify yourself, but then have you sign in after you speak so we can...
Yeah, I signed in already.
You're so, so efficient. Well done.
Well, you know, we have to keep these things moving.
Exactly.
Mark Janko. So, and before I start, this is off the track, but with next Thursday being Thanksgiving, I just want to tell everybody in this room that I am damn glad that I live in Bloomington, all right? So, just wanted you to know that. All right, now we'll get down to business. Now, everything I say is on behalf of Restore the Nine, so, um, not that they're not darned too. Okay, and this is basically about the Minnesota River access for bikes and why we kind of feel that Queen Avenue access is problematic and unnecessary. Most of the other things with bikes, of course, have been, as you're aware, have been ruled unfeasible, but this is kind of dangling out there. So, there are twelve existing access points to the Minnesota River for bicycles in Bloomington presently. Another access point at Queen seems redundant and kind of suboptimal use of the money that needs to be spent on environmental restoration in Central Park. Adding access at Queen would only advise cyclists to use the NMCC pedestrian trail as a bike trail, which happens quite often already. Enforcement is already really hard, as anybody who walks down there regularly can tell you. Allowing bikes anywhere in Central Park was going to kind of open a Pandora's box that I feel it'll be impossible to close. It would be much better to have bike racks at all access points to encourage cyclists to enjoy Central Park on foot. Again, access to the river kind of already exists in abundance. Parking at the Queen Avenue entrance is limited to maybe two or three vehicles, and there is a segment of cyclists that transport their bikes by car, and they go to off-road trails, and likely they'd have to park on neighborhood streets. And these people are used to driving long distances to ride. So encouraging them to park on the neighborhood streets probably won't be real popular with the local people there. And again, already abundant parking exists at many access points to the river, which include the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge headquarters, the entrance to the Bass Ponds, the end of Old Cedar, Partners Picnic and Trail area, the south end of the loop to the Gideon Pond House, the southern end of Lyndale Avenue South, which is finally coming online pretty quick, so that'll be great, be able to ride down there again, and the Bloomington Ferry Bridge access, that's seven, where there's plenty of places to park cars already. So, and the last thing on my, my thing here is that cyclists, of course, who prefer to ride to the river can already ride their bikes to an access point, of which, again, there's twelve. So, again, that's, kind of makes that point. So, I brought a bunch of these, but I didn't see Safa, so I was a deer in the headlights. I didn't know where to get them. You, and should that be seven?
You can give me whatever you got.
Well, I got a whole bunch for sustainability too, so I got, but I'll get some to you.
One.
I'll try.
Whatever you...
Okay, okay, good. Well, I'll try and, any, I guess, questions?
Thank you, thank you for comments. Council, any questions, Mark?
Great, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, it's Chris Ann.
Oh, I am Chris Ann Loria, here in Bloomington. So, I'm kind of working on, talking on the heels of what Mark has already introduced you to, but I'm here on the behalf of Restore the Nine, and I'm asking for your support for an important decision regarding the nine-mile creek corridor renewal project. We recommend that the trail south of one hundred and sixth street remain a natural surface trail. The design consultants have left open the possibility of paving that entire pedestrian trail from Moier Park to the Minnesota River. We currently have a unique two-and-a-half-mile nature path. Roughly one half is paved and one half is natural surface. The paved portion is from Moier to one hundred and sixth street. The unpaved portion is from one hundred and sixth to the river. This combination of trail surfaces accommodates the highest percentage of users in the park and also has other significant advantages versus a fully paved trail. We believe preserving the natural surface trail is essential for ensuring equity, financial prudence, and environmental sustainability. As our community strives to improve inclusivity, it is crucial to recognize the diverse needs of individuals with varying disabilities. While we support initiatives aimed at improving ADA accessibility, the design approach must also consider the unique challenges faced by many community members who require a softer trail. Upholding the integrity of the trail in this section of Central Park is not just about preservation, it's about fostering an environment where all pedestrians can enjoy the outdoors without barriers. In general, ADA accessibility ensures that individuals with disabilities have free and full access to the same programs, services, and areas as those without. The Act requires that parks and other public facilities provide reasonable accommodations. According to the Act, an accommodation is considered reasonable as long as it does not impose undue financial burden. When some people hear ADA, they often think only of wheelchairs. However, the Act protects many other types of disabilities as well, and many of our community members have those other disabilities. Walking on hard surfaces puts additional stress on one's joints and can lead to pain because hard surfaces don't absorb shock as effectively as softer surfaces. Restore the Nine has heard from numerous people who suffer from joint diseases such as rheumatoid arthritis, incoloscopy-spondylitis, lupus, and more. This trail is also attractive to many older adults, a population in which joint disease is common. And I can say that as a certified nurse practitioner. Furthermore, many dog owners walk the natural path because it is easier on their joints, their dog's joints too, and the surface is substantially cooler on their paws than on blacktop. All these individuals rely on the natural surface for exercise, and restricting access for these individuals would create new disparities. Additionally, we oppose paving that portion of the trail because it's a wetland forest, and it's the first area to become inundated with spring floods and heavy precipitation, and it's the last area where water recedes. Climate change is already increasing the frequency and intensity of heavy rain events, and this trend unfortunately is expected to continue. Without a paver base layer, pavement is much more likely to buckle when covered with water for extended periods. However, if a paver base layer is added, then the city will need to purchase wetland mitigation credits because this is a jurisdictional wetland. In short, a decision to pave south of one hundred and sixth street raises significant concerns related to environmental impacts, construction and maintenance, costs, equity, and practicality. The portion of the park located north of one hundred and sixth street is already paved, and we advocate for improving that area to accommodate individuals dependent on mobility aids, while recommending that the trail south of one hundred and sixth street remain unpaid. Additionally, investing in a project vulnerable to frequent flooding is costly, laborious, and an inefficient use of taxpayer funds. It is crucial to prioritize solutions that foster inclusivity and sustainability, ensuring that the needs of community members are met while safeguarding our resources for the future. Your support in this matter would be much appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Questions? All right, thank you much.
Thanks, thank you.
Sally?
Okay, when I was, when I previously spoke, I said there were seven reports where the police were driving into the area that mentioned my name. There were eight. I was under police surveillance. I do not know why. I do not know when it began. I do not know for how long. I do not know if it ended. I did a data request for all the data from August first, two thousand nineteen, to February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. That includes my name, all police reports, all police CAD incidents, detailed reports, citations, complaints, texts, phone calls, roll calls, emails. There was no data after September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. The eight CAD reports for extra patrol with my name in them were from December two thousand nineteen and January two thousand twenty. Again, there is nothing in this data to explain why my name is in eight reports. I was being watched, and the police should tell me why. There should be a legal basis. There should be data to support the police choosing to use city resources to monitor me. Again, I asked the city to do an internal affairs investigation.
Any questions, Council? Thank you. Robert?
Hello, um, Mr. Verbrugghe, do you have an update on, oh, I'm Robert Coleman. Do you, do you have an update on the present, no?
Okay, you're planning to schedule time with us.
Okay, um, so, in regards to Network Now Metro Transit system redesign, so much time has passed that the official comment period has ended. If you guys haven't, I think the forum is still online, so I would love for you guys to submit a comment about how, I think if you read the first page, you'll see that they talk a lot about increasing service and, you know, a thirty percent increase over, in the metro area, but that service is barely coming to Bloomington. In terms of the operators that they plan to hire for regular route service, I think it's two hundred and seventy that they're looking to hire, and only about four of those operators will be used in Bloomington, just barely over one percent. There's some, on the back page, there's some issues about some areas of the metro area that are much less, there's, okay. In the Met Council's two thousand fifty Transportation Policy Plan, they have a Transit Market Index, which is, in general, it is jobs, job density plus population density, and then it is, you know, split into five different groupings throughout the metro area. They have a map online to get the specific numbers. But in terms of the, there are areas in the metro area that are Area Five, Transit Market Area Five, which is the least transit supportive, that are getting as good of service as Bloomington is in Transit Market Area Two. And in fact, the, compared to the last plan in two thousand fourteen, much more Bloomington is more transit supportive, while we're not, we're not seeing that, that coming through in transit service improvements. Where, where, in terms of the, like, the service cuts that were, that happened in two thousand twenty-two, the, that service is not coming back. Service is not coming back on the five forty-six. Weekend service is not coming back on the five thirty-four. There will still be no weekend service on the five thirty-four, the five thirty-seven, and the five forty-two. The five forty-two is the worst in my eyes, that service is not coming back on weekends or in the evenings, because that is service that was cut in two thousand four and never came back. It is getting midday service, so there will be a bus in between eight AM and three PM, when there currently isn't any buses on the five forty-two on American Boulevard. But again, that is service that was cut in two thousand four. I, it's, it's a little frustrating that it's been silenced in terms of, uh, Metro Transit, you know, for the past two years, not saying anything about when service was going to return, you know, and then in the past couple of months saying, hey, wait for Network Now. Everything's going to be in Network Now. If it's not in Network Now, it's not happening in the next two years, and then it coming and it not being anywhere near what Bloomington deserves. I've been talking with my friends who are activists in other cities, and their council members are all working on it. They're, you know, getting the news out to their, to their constituents to say, hey, you guys should comment on this plan. They've submitted comments themselves. They talk about it in meetings and stuff like that, and I don't see that from you guys. I hope that you guys will in the future, even though the official comment period is over.
Couple of questions for you, Robert.
Yeah.
I think, and we might have asked this in the past, what's been your interaction with our Met Council representative to Bloomington? And, and is there any progress being made on that front?
I haven't spoken to him.
I think that would be an important part of this. I mean, you can talk to us, but we're not the decision makers on all this.
Sure, I mean, I've, I've spoken to, to the general manager of Metro Transit and multiple people within the Network Now project team, including the, the project lead of Network Now who lied to me. That was frustrating. And also, Mark Christiansen, who is the planner for the, for our area for Metro Transit. I've sent emails to a bunch of other people, but not to, what's his name again?
Our, our Met Council member?
Yeah.
John Pacheco.
John Pacheco.
Thank you very much. So, I, I would advocate, I appreciate your coming here and talking with us, and we could advocate until we're blue in the face, but it's, I think Commissioner Pacheco, that's the person you need to really get in the ear of, and, and the folks who are also in support of this, that's where the calls need to go, because he's the decision maker. He's part of the decision-making body on this. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. He's invited to our breakfast meeting. So, we'll have an opportunity to talk to him, and when is that?
We don't have a date set. I'm having trouble getting his calendar right now.
Okay, but it's, isn't it?
Yeah, we meet, we meet with our Hennepin County Commissioner and our Met Council representative on a bimonthly basis. We, we had to cancel our last meeting in October, so the next one will be in December.
And if we reason, we'll just bring this information to them.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, and we, Met Council makes the, like, the final approval, but it, it's pretty separate from the Metro Transit team. It's not a Met Council initiative. It is Metro Transit.
Metro Transit is a, an animal of the Met Council.
Yeah.
It's...
Where the funding is.
Right, for sure.
It's down to the money.
It, it is...
But, but it sounds like to your concern and request that we have definitive action to put forth our input into that, that that will happen, and we will advocate for Bloomington, as I would expect we always will.
Yeah.
I'd also say, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that there's, there is a metro microzone in Bloomington on this map. And so, there's an open question in my mind for you, Robert, about what is it that's really lacking? I've always thought about it as intra-Bloomington transit, meaning we don't have buses that go, that can get you east and west and north and south within the confines of Bloomington. This may solve for that. I don't know. Like, I don't know enough about metro microzones, but my, my understanding of that concept is that it's a, it's a ride-sharing service that uses the metro mobility buses to, like...
Right.
They do call sharing. Outside of that, it sounds like you want certain extras, inter-city routes to be restored, either their frequency, their length, or their operation. So, I'm not sure they have that consideration here, but they, they might be two parallel paths, is my point.
Okay.
One, which is included in this...
Right, we gotta, we gotta wrap up here, but very quickly, if you...
I have...
Very quickly, Robert.
I have sent you guys an email about the microzones. If you, my opinions have slightly changed, a little bit mellowed on, when I, in that email, I was like, they're a really bad idea. They're not as horrible an idea in my eyes now. If the local service was returning, I wouldn't care, but seeing as this is replacing the local service, I'm not a fan of it because of how it's very unreliable. I've ridden MVTA Connect and Southwest Transit Prime, and my experience was very different, whether I was going, I was taking a five-mile trip, and it took me over an hour on Southwest Prime versus MVTA Connect, where it took me fifteen minutes to go three miles. It's not, you, you never know how long it's going to take until...
Cut you off, just because, I want to keep moving on here. I, but to your point, Councilmember, I would like to learn more about these microzones and how it relates to, I've heard of good successes in other major metropolitan areas about these micro-type zones and, in other, I've heard it across the country, Robert. I've heard it from other councilmembers across the country, maybe not in your experience, but I've heard it from across the country. So, thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for your advocacy on this. Those are the official, I saw a couple of people come in. Anybody else? We've got about a couple of minutes here if you wanted to speak.
Well, you know, what time do we have?
Six fifteen.
Well, I...
No, but if you, if you want to speak, you're going to have to come up to the table, introduce yourself, and do it officially. Yep.
My name is Jerry Hillary. I'm a fifty-year resident of Bloomington. Ran our business here in Bloomington for forty years. Raised three kids and have been active during those periods of time in leadership in the schools and sports and neighborhood organizations. And spoke here about a month ago relative to the senior center and health and wellness centers, and I was the last speaker then, and I got the same opportunity here this time. So, my purpose in getting, sitting before you was, you know, looking to see that Bloomington is a better place to live, which aligns, as I looked at the website, has identified on the website for Bloomington, cultivate enduring and remarkable communities where people want to be. Enduring is a word I'd like to come back to in a little bit. To recap on the last time, I am looking, I sat here before talking about retaining a standalone senior center. And I also had done, put some posts out on Nextdoor and had two questions that were most commonly brought back to me. One was why do seniors need their own place? And it's, it seems obvious to me, it also seems hard, hard to explain. But we have an education system where we have preschool, elementary, middle, and senior high school, all predicated upon age, and there are different needs for different ages, and certainly seniors have different needs than preschoolers. And, uh, so, and then, of course, we have a community here that is growing. In nineteen seventy, also off the city's website, seniors, which fifty-five-plus, monitors three percent of the population. In two thousand nineteen, it was up to eighteen percent, and now it's twenty-five percent. And, you know, there's also increased loneliness we're hearing about. The pace of change is accelerating all things that have a negative impact on seniors. And then you ask, well, what's happened for seniors? About ten years ago, the senior center stopped delivering meals, and the kitchen was closed down. Now, we're losing the standalone nature of the senior center, Creekside. You know, we had a referendum that we're raising taxes now to build a new community center, which heretofore has been a senior center, and, which sounds like a nice deal, you get a new home. And however, what we're ending up with is an apartment building that we are going to be sharing with a bunch of other people. They will have a, have to pay to walk through the door. There'll be multi-use spaces. People can walk through the door for six dollars, what they used to walk through for nothing, to go play a game of cards in a smaller room. Now, it'll be in the corner of a large room. And, of course, we're losing the wood shop, the billiards, rock shop, there's the boutique, and all under the auspices that they're not fitting the multi-use space. And yet, we're getting swimming pools, we're getting weight rooms, getting running tracks, gymnasiums, and a childcare center, which, to me, all seem like single-use spaces. I don't know what you do in a swimming pool besides swim. So, that, that was why I was here before, and as I've looked into this, I've talked to some present school board members, past school board members, BAA presidents, a gentleman that had just been inducted into the Hall of Fame for BAA about services being rendered. I know Olson's swimming pool is being, uh, built, rebuilt here now because it's, has failed. And I, and it's just struck me as what a waste. I talked last time about all the opportunities that are not being realized in the senior center, be it the food service that could be servicing people in need beyond just seniors. We could be teaching home ec kind of classes, woodworking the same. We could upgrade it to a CNC machine and tie in software and interface with kids. So, we've got three swimming pools in Bloomington that nobody knows about. The second question that I got off the Nextdoor post is, well, I didn't even know we had a senior center. And I don't think too many people know that we have three swimming pools, one of which is open for public use. I don't figure too many people know that the curriculum two years ago dropped swimming in Fayette. So, we've got three swimming pools that aren't being used by the school system. In two thousand two, we had a referendum to build activity centers with weight rooms and running tracks. And after COVID, those did not return to open public use. And yet, we're again going to add another swimming pool and another running track and weight room. You know, when I, when I was growing up, my parents didn't let me get more food on my plate until I finished what was on my plate. And it seems like we've got a lot still sitting on our plate that's not being utilized, that a hundred million dollars could be spent to really make these things something special, to make them enduring, not as with the activity center for twenty years later it to disappear for, from use. They still sit there, underutilized. Our swimming pool's the same thing. So, um, there are so many things that we could be doing...
I'm going to ask you to wrap.
Better things.
You need to get downstairs and ask you to wrap.
I am wrapping up there. So, I don't know what's happened since last time, but I, I would like to be able to help make a difference in any guidance here. I intend to be writing articles and such as well along these lines to see that we use this hundred million dollars and as most effective of its own manner.
Fine, I was thinking of enduring... Taking our way through the process of the, the, the entire design of the new Health and Wellness Center. There are plenty of options for community input and community engagement. There've been, I think, a lot already, and there will continue to be up until the point where decisions are made about going forward on this. And, 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 I mean, to be clear, this was brought forward to the voters of Bloomington, and the voters of Bloomington said, yes, we want to do this. And that's, that's an important piece of this, that this was brought forward, and yes, you say taxpayer dollars. This is, this is a local option sales tax that voters said, yes, we want to do this because we would like to build a community health and wellness center. A community, not a senior center.
Right.
Community health on this.
The current one is a community center, which was a senior center, so it was not clear what it was going to be, and instead, there was no...
More clear what it's going to be. We, I think, I think, our Health and Wellness Center, I think the work that the city did to explain what it was and what the vote was being taken on, I don't think it could have been more clear.
Well, it certainly wasn't clear to me, and that may have been my fault, but I have not so talked to anybody that thought it was.
All right, well, thank you, Jerry.
I'm there.
Very quickly, very quickly.
I'd like to be with you. I'd love to do that with staff. I know you contacted me, but it'd be fun to meet with you with staff. Sometimes we can arrange that.
Okay, and how, how would I do that?
I'll have them contact you.
All right, Council, we got to get downstairs. I will look for a motion to adjourn our listening session. session.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Six-zero, we are, uh, adjourned. Let's head downstairs for our meeting at 6:30. Thank you all for being here tonight.